Well, first of all, for being here, I know that everybody has a lot going on right now. Everybody has a lot on their minds right now with the wildfire. I'm gonna ask you some questions about that specifically. So, first of all, we're here this evening, in case not everybody knows, to discuss with our candidates for districts one, two, and five for the Taos County Board of Commissioners for the June primary, about their positions, why they're running for election. Uh, thank you to the Taos County Chamber of Commerce and True Kids One for working with us again on helping us to put together this forum, sending some questions our way. Joining me this evening are candidates Susan Trujillo and Bob Romero for District One, which generally encompasses the town of Taos and the area of Lower Ranchitos. Miguel Romero Jr., who is running unopposed this year for District Two, which covers Cuesta, Costilla, and Amalia. And Chris Duran and Ron Mascareñas, welcome, uh, for District Five, which covers Penasco, Pilar, and Canyon. Uh, we're seeing a lot changing on our commission this year. Uh, those among you who will be elected will join District Four Commissioner Angelique Rush, of course, the current Vice Chair of the Board, and District Three Commissioner, excuse me, Darlene V. Hill, the current Chair of the Commission. Uh, some people sent us questions in advance for the forum, um, and one of the questions we got is very simple, just what, what does a county commissioner do? Um, and just a brief summary is just that the Taos County, A Taos County Commissioner helps to oversee the Taos County Sheriff's Office along with the Taos County Manager, uh, the Adult Detention Center, the senior centers, DWI programs, sometimes they control the county budget critically, they levy taxes, enact ordinances, and create resolutions. Their job in the simplest terms is to represent their constituents in their respective districts. So, uh, like with the past forums, we'll go in order, in alphabetical order, as you'll appear on the ballot. And we'll start with opening statements, uh, you'll have two minutes. Uh, when you're reaching the twenty second mark, since we're not in person, it's a little harder to indicate when you're coming to the end of time, but I'll send a message in the chat uh, when you have twenty seconds left, so, uh, please respect the time limits. Uh, and Chris Duran is first in the order, so Chris.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Cristóbal Durán from Penasco, currently live in Redarte. I, uh, decided to run for County Commissioner, I sat on the Kate Carson Co-op Board as the Vice Chair, and I believe we've been doing a lot of good from Kate Carson, and I'd like to expand that to the county, to the town, with unite instead of divide, I think, you know, a hundred percent daytime solar with battery storage for over thirty thousand members, that's a big accomplishment. Uh, true broadband network, and I think the Taos County is at the prime time to, to rebrand itself other than just tourism and art. I think we always talk about bringing our youth back home and creating jobs. And that's why I do wanna run to unite and bring collaborate instead of divide. That's basically it.
All right, thank you, Chris. Um, and up next, uh, Ron, go ahead, opening statement.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight on the Zoom. Uh, my name is Ronald J. Mascareñas, I currently reside in Yanos San Juan, New Mexico. Uh, I've been married with my wife for over thirty-five years, have three wonderful daughters and thirteen grandchildren. Uh, one of the reasons I wanna run for County Commissioners, obviously, I was approached by a lot of members over the past years since I moved back home sixteen years ago. And, uh, I'm one of those kids, or one of the rare that, you know, has come back home. Normally, everybody leaves and they don't come back home. So, I wanna share my experiences with people, my experiences with, that I've had with different organizations. Yes, we need to work together to make things happen, but on the other hand, there's other things that we need to do locally to keep our kids here, to keep our people here. Uh, one of them obviously is, uh, increase our wages for all our county employees. Uh, with the current wages, you can't afford to live in Taos or stay home, that's why people leave. Uh, we have issues with our hospital that we need to work on, we have several projects out there that need to be finished, our veteran cemetery, our agriculture, uh, center, our ag center, they have a kitchen and stuff that, that's been put there aside, there's a lot of things within our county, within District Five in particular, that need to move forward and get finished, uh, seems to be a law in uh, progress in a lot of these, uh, situations. So, we just wanna move this forward. And, um, you know, not only is, is, uh, solar important to us, there's a lot of other things important to us, doesn't help if we have solar, if we can't get these other things done, or if we can't pay fair wages to people and keep them here in town. Uh, obviously affordable housing, and I'm talking long-term affordable housing where people can, you know, say, hey, this will be my forever home, not just a rental home. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Um, Bob, go ahead.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone, I'm, uh, Bob Romano F. R., Bob Romero on the ballot, I'm a retired educator. I finished my career, uh, thirty-two years, but in education, teaching history and government classes at UNM Taos. I'm also historian, I've written several books, including The History of Taos. I currently sit on the advisor of the Francis Water Sanitation District, uh, Board as Board Chairman. Elvaya has been a model local government, uh, for the past eighteen, twenty years. Uh, we have built a lot of water lines, sewer lines. Uh, Elvaya has consistently completed infrastructure projects on schedule and under budget. I also have served on other boards, I served on the school board when the Royals Del Norte Elementary School was, uh, built. And I also, and at that time, that, uh, the first phase of the UNM Taos Tower Campus was constructed. So, I am, uh, running for Taos County Commissioner because I feel that, uh, the people of Taos County deserve just good government. I feel that this is an opportune time to build some more infrastructure. I think the timing is very good for that, and with my experience background in developing infrastructure, I, and overseeing the big multi-dollar, uh, multimillion dollar budgets, I can help make that happen at the county. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Bob, thank you for being here, uh, Susan, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to my home. As you can see, this is my dining room, and so I feel very comfortable this evening. Um, my full name is Susan Karen Gonzalez Trujillo. Usually people ask me, what does the K stand for? Well, it stands for Karen. Uh, I'm the daughter of the late Alvia C. Gonzalez, formerly of Cuesta, New Mexico. My father moved our family to Taos to accept a teaching position at the Taos Municipal Schools as a science teacher. My mother is Elena Helen Gonzalez, and she's ninety-five years old and lives in Taos. And now she's my neighbor, and, uh, she convinced me to buy a home right next to her. So, I'm her neighbor, and so we've kinda walked back and forth to each other's home. I have lived in Taos, in Taos County all my life, and I was married to the late Lawrence Teacher Hio. I have two sons, Tom and Jerome, and a daughter Jenna, who is deceased. I am currently raising my five-year-old grandson after the death of his mother. I have six other grandchildren. I have worked in the public sector for over forty years. I, previously, I worked at the First and Smith supermarkets for ten years, where I met many of the people of Taos County. I became a widow at the age of forty-three and soon after made a wise decision to enroll in, in college. I, I graduated with an applied science in accounting, a certificate in bookkeeping, uh, from Northern New Mexico, and I continued to take classes at UNM after I was hired at Taos County. And, um, I would always want to augment my ability to always improve myself and do a better job at my, at the work that I was completing. I was employed by Taos County for twenty-five years, which includes Grand Financial Administrator, Legal Administrative Assistant slash Contract Administrator to the County Attorney, Finance Director for eleven years, and Indigent Fund Coordinator. After taking my early retirement at sixty-two, I ran for Taos County Treasurer and served two four-year terms, the second term I ran unopposed. I would like to say that when I, as a former employee, I understand the complexity of county government after serving Taos County. If elected, I would bring my expertise, experience, ethical standards, and diplomacy skills to the Taos County Commission Board. It would be my honor and privilege to serve as a servant leader in, to my community and to the county government as the, as a commissioner. Politics, to me, I liked, I like this.
That's time.
Okay. I cannot just say this, politics that gives people a voice in government, and I want to be that voice.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so let's get into questions. Um, so our first question, I mentioned we partnered again with True Kids One. Um, they have a graduating senior this year, uh, Isabella O'Donnell Sulferberg. We've read questions from her in all of our forums so far this year. Very smart student, um, always has something good to ask. Um, and she asks, uh, what in your opinion is the most pressing issue facing the youth in Taos County? And what is one thing you do as Commissioner to positively influence that? Um, Chris, we'll start the rotation over, uh, Chris, you're up first. And two minutes on that.
I think some of the most pressing issues with the youth on District Five is, uh, District Five, there's not community centers or youth centers in, uh, the Penasco area. Or, I mean, there's community centers, but there's not youth centers here, or in the Pilar or Canyon area. I know we've expanded, uh, Wi-Fi hotspots, so, so the youth can, uh, uh, get on the net, on the World Wide Web, and, uh, education. You know, and I think the other, uh, there's a lot of drugs in, uh, Taos County. I know there's a lot of, you hear about it from Costilla all the way down here to Penasco. There's, uh, a lot of meth. So, I think educating and health is very important. But I think education is the key for the youth, and there needs to be activities. And, like in Penasco, there's not a whole lot of places for the youth to, to seek employment. I mean, there's the Dollar Store, uh, back in the day, they used to, the Forest Service would hire the youth in the summer, they no longer do that. Highway Department would hire, uh, the youth, help in the summers. Those programs are gone. So, I think those are pressing issues for the youth to, where there's nothing keeping them here. And they get depressed, and they have nothing to tie up their time, so they turn to drugs, so I think education and drug, drug awareness and, and, uh, you know, mental health are very important for the youth. I mean, there's, Taos has a youth center, they have bowling alleys, and, uh, there's jobs, but for a kid to travel from Pilar or from Penasco, they gotta, they gotta go to Taos. Sometimes they, they ain't, they can't afford to, luckily, there's the Blue Bus right now, but a lot of parents don't feel safe with letting their child ride on public transportation. So, those are some of the pressing issues that I see.
Okay. Ron, uh, you're up next.
Well, our, our youth in Taos County, you know, there is, uh, stuff for them to do, uh, in Taos. Um, in, in particular, and I know from experience, I have my grandkids that are involved in hockey and jiu-jitsu and baseball and softball and all that kinda stuff, but bottom line, it takes the effort of the family or parents to get these kids to those activities. Um, it is expensive. That's why we have to look at these salaries for county employees so that they can maybe afford to do these, uh, types of, um, activities. You know, the other issue in our county is the, or use of opioids. Um, and that's across the co- uh, country, it's not just in Taos County, it's not in, just in District Five. Uh, that's a big issue. So, you know, I'd like to see with, through the county, if we could maybe figure out some kind of assistance uh, and programs for people to be able to engage in these activities, uh, to be able to keep the kids busy. Uh, the World Wide Web is good, but sometimes that particular stuff helps get our teenagers in trouble um, because of it's open to the world, and there's a lot of things that they can get into through that situation, so you have to block certain usages and such. But that, that's what I see is, you know, as long as we keep our kids busy, we keep, uh, them in, in those activities, uh, they tend not to get in so much trouble. You know, one of the big things around here that, that we'll get involved in is 4H is a good program for kids, um, to stay busy. Um, you know, we have a lot of agriculture here in this area, but people just don't wanna spend the time uh, raising goats, raising chickens, raising pigs, raising, uh, steers. Um, and that's very important, that can keep our people busy, so we need to partner up with those organizations to make sure that kids know that these are available for them.
All right, thank you, uh, Bob.
Uh, yes, I think the, what, what most, uh, difficult, uh, uh, issues that young people face in growing up in Taos is just fitting in, typical, uh, uh, situation of of growing up and fitting in, there's a saying in Spanish that says, uh, "Tell me who you walk with and I will tell you who, who you are." So, you have to, as a young individual, have to be careful who your peers are, because the peers have more influence on each other than the parents by the time they're teenagers. But teenagers have to be thinking about what the next step is, what, where am I going next? A lot of them think about, oh, I just gotta get out of Taos or get away from home and go somewhere else and I'll be fine. Well, think about that, but going to college is, is, is one thing. Uh, thinking about what career, what, uh, what field, uh, what, what educational major you wanna go into is very important, but the family structure is very important. Uh, kids in Taos do succeed if they have good guidance and good structure. Uh, I have two kids graduated from Taos High School, one is an attorney, working for Facebook in Silicon Valley, the other has a PhD working for Central New Mexico Community College in Albuquerque. They haven't gotten back to Taos, but they're gainfully employed, and one day they will be back in Taos.
All right, thanks, Bob, uh, Susan.
I attended a, um, a Taos Municipal School, uh, Schools Board meeting last night. And, um, we usually have presentations from the administration and, um, and the projects that are being, um, provided for our children for the summer program. And I would really encourage parents to look into the, uh, into the schools for, for these summer programs. They're short-lived, but they're incredible, they just presented us with an excellent model of a, um, a very reading program that, uh, focuses on comprehension, that they've linked, you know, the reading part with the, with the brain to be able to comprehend, and that's exciting for our children, because they would learn to, to read and expand, they, they can reach another world just in, in literature, in, in what they read. And I'm a reader, I'm an avid reader, and to me, I just, that has opened up my world. And, um, but also, there are other programs, I have my five-year-old grandson, and I enrolled him in swimming classes, he's also in a, in a program that, um, um, through the Lanzarote Group, that, again, fosters, uh, behavioral uh, issues for them, mental illness. They're, they're encouraging, uh, development, child development. What a beautiful way to, to access, and I'm sure that there, that if, uh, if people look into these programs, those are available, so there's, again, there's soccer, there's T-ball, there's just going to the park, well, we, last summer, we spent a lot of time at the park from, uh, from four to eight. And he, my, my, especially my grandson, would just, he enjoyed, um, playing with other children, just, um, and I, I enjoyed visiting with, with the mothers or even the fathers that would go with their children, but we have avenues here in Taos that are open, and we're, we can do more, we can do, we can do a lot more, but again, the home is the base, the basis of, and, and if that becomes our focus, then in government, we will succeed.
All right, thank you, Susan, that was interesting, you all had different answers, it doesn't always happen. But it's always nice. All right, so we're gonna move into the regular questions we have, we've, uh, talked to the public, we've talked to True Kids One, uh, the Taos County Chamber of Commerce. Um, so, the first one's about wildfire. Um, we have a big smoke plume over our mountains this week, um, a lot of people are worried about that. Uh, given the way the Hermit's Peak Fire, uh, started. Uh, there are a lot of concerns about fire mitigation work, uh, prescribed burns. Um, so, in light of that, what, what's your view on fire mitigation work in Taos County? Uh, what sorts of work would you advocate for? And the second prong of that question is, how would you ensure if there were a major fire here in the county, that there would be an orderly and safe evacuation? Um, so, I believe we would start with Ron first for that one. Go ahead, Ron, uh, one minute on this question. I think you're muted, Ron.
All right. Uh, you know, our, our forest fires here, obviously, it's real close to home for all of us, we have a lot of friends and family who have been evacuated. Fire mitigation, you know, unfortunately, it, it, fire mitigation has different organizations working together, including the Forest Service, the utility companies and the local governments, everybody else. You know, unfortunately, um, sometimes with the Forest Service, they don't quite allow things to happen that need to happen, you know? Uh, easements that are allowed, aren't being allowed to be cleaned the way they need to be cleaned, I mean, you, you got a forty or fifty-foot easement, but you have eighty-foot trees. Um, you know, the math just doesn't add up there when it comes to the winds that we've been having. Uh, so, all that needs to be looked at, it needs to be talked about. We need to clear these places, our forests are just so thick. Um, 'cause we haven't been allowed, so all these roads are closed, we haven't been allowed to go in there for the locals to thin out, pull out the wood, everything else. Um, I'm not saying that's gonna prevent for, forest fires, but that's gonna prevent the amount of fuel that these forest fires, if they do start, have to continue to burn. And, uh, we just need to work on that and get that situated.
All right, thank you, uh, Bob.
Uh, yes, well, the, these have been devastating, particularly for surrounding communities, but it does let us know that it could happen to us. And so, we have to be thinking about, what if it did happen to us, the authorities came to our door and said, "Get ready, uh, you gotta evacuate," uh, that happened to the people from Moton, Las Vegas. Uh, we knew some people in those areas, and they are actually staying on our property right now. We have had up to twelve people, and of course, they brought their pets or animals. And so, uh, we have to do what we can, of course, the county has responded, also provided support at the One Iguan Salas Agricultural Center. But, uh, overall, uh, we just have to, uh, uh, take note that, uh, the fires are devastating, and we have to be prepared.
All right, thank you, uh, Miguel. Uh, Susan, go ahead.
Um, I was, I was trying to think of what was in place in the county, and years ago, uh, what was, um, put into place was the Fire Marshal, um, which had the oversight of all the fire districts, but also the, uh, an emergency type of program. And, um, they have done training, and we were supposed to, we would log in and get a certification as to how we would respond to, to emergencies. So, I could definitely trust what the county is doing at this time and, uh, in assisting even with, with the areas that, um, um, that are being, um, for the evacuation is, is, um, being implemented. And, uh, there's, do we have any, uh, any real resources, I think, until it happens? We just have to trust that those people that are, I know the Sheriff's Department is involved, the State Police is involved, all the safety, um, emergency people are involved, they're on alert. The hospitals are on alert, we just don't know what this fire is going to do, and it, it could turn on us, just over the mountain, I have friends, I have a fam- family that has property in Taos County, they're concerned for their property. And, uh, of, of another friend of mine lives in, in the Taupu area, I mean, and she was concerned, she says, I don't know whether to, I'm starting to pack, I, we are on alert, we just don't know, but we can help. I know that, um, when I heard, and this is far, far away, it's a far-reaching, when I heard about what is, has happened in, in the Ukraine, my heart went out. And, uh, and I determined to help, and I have been looking for the best source. And I might not be able to, to physically do anything for someone, but, but you know what, we can do monetarily, monetary, uh, contributions to those people that are, we checked with the, um, with the Ag Center to see what was made available, they had, they're ready to accommodate people, there are people that are, again, opening their homes.
That's time, Susan.
And that is good, all is good, they can be done.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, next question, um, the Taos County Commission recently formed a joint board with the town of Taos to address the recycling.
John, don't I get to answer this?
Oh, I apologize, Chris.
No, sorry. Um, no, I think that the Forest Service needs to open up these roads to harvest fuel wood, a lot of people still heat their house with fuel. I think they need, it'd make a healthier forest, uh, they could create jobs in revenue by, back like they used to with sawmills. And it'd be a healthier forest for agriculture with the grazing. And it'd be nice for wildlife. You know, Taos area is known for hunting. And I think there needs to be better roads when it comes to the evacuation of that, and I think between the town, the county, and other entities, they all need to have one command center so that the information gets out to, to the evacuation centers, to those that are misplaced from their home, they're sitting there worried and not, not knowing, but, uh, I think there's, if the Forest Service would allow, you know, the harvesting of fuel wood, it would, uh, for lumber or for fuel wood to eat, uh, it'd be, be a healthier forest, and it mitigates some of these, these fire dangers that we have.
Thanks, Chris. All right, so, halfway through this question, how would you work with the newly-formed recycling board between the town of Taos and the County Commission to get recycling services restored here? It's probably one of the number-one things that's being discussed right now. Uh, Bob, you're first on that, uh, we'll do, we'll do two minutes on that.
Uh, yes, uh, recycling is very important. And, uh, the sitting commissioners and, uh, mayor and council have, uh, met and they have come up with an eight-point plan. And, uh, they are planning to appoint an advisory committee to make recommendations on how to get the recycling center open again. And so, uh, we do need to get back into recycling and get the recycling center open, so, uh, hopefully, that'll happen within the next six months, and it'll be in place by the time the new commissioners, uh, take office, January first.
Okay, Susan.
I spoke with, um, the mayor, um, yesterday, and I asked him um, where they were in their collaboration with, uh, Taos County and, um, the different issues, which were, again, the, at the top of the list, the top priorities, the recycling and the affordable housing. And, um, he said that, um, they have, um, they are drafting, the, uh, their attorneys are drafting the details of the, of those agreements, but they are coming together, and it'll be done, so, and the, just the fact that the, the communication is open, the desire is there, and the passion is there to get these, um, um, what the people want in that is the recycling, the necessity for it. When we see exactly how, how our bins are filled, are filled every week with the trash, with the, especially the plastic, people seem to be very, very concerned about plastic. And so, the studies will be there, and to be able to implement a good recycling project here in Taos that is much needed. I would satisfy the concerns of, of our people too, but it could be even be all the way from the schoolchildren to the, to the government offices, to the private sector. I know that in, at Taos County, just them setting up bins to part. I know that in Taos County, just them setting up bins to, for things could be recycled, trash is trash, but the recycling is there, in our homes, we can do the same thing. And, and that would, that would start, even with our children, teaching them the value of safeguarding our forest, safeguarding the, the water, safeguarding, I mean, even the trash. That, I, I look at the forest at times, and I think, you know, when we, we go for drives, and you see the trash, even in the forest, the animals don't trash the forest, we trash the forest. Let's not, let's bring the, our, our garbage home, our trash home, and dump it in our garbage. But first of all, recycle.
Alright, thank you, Susan. Chris?
Yeah, I know recycling's a, a big issue, and I think there needs to be, it boils down to funding. And I know you see in recycling where they take them to Capital Scrap Metals in Santa Fe, old junk cars or aluminum, and their, people get paid for it. So, I think the recycling, I'm glad to hear that the town and the county are collaborating and, and working with that. But I think a lot of, a lot of that scrap metal, scrap aluminum, the, the trash, the plastics, if there's an incentive on scrap metal, to where it funds itself, you know, where you go, sign the contract, when you take it to Capital Metals, or I think there's one up in Pueblo, Colorado, where they're giving you money, so it goes back, and it, it starts paying for itself. And, and people see the benefit of the community being cleaned, and, and it, it keeps driving forward. So, I, I'm all in favor of it, and I hope, I'm glad to see that their communication and, and the contracts and the attorneys are, are working on that.
Alright, thank you. Ron, go ahead.
Well, the first step has happened, right, the meeting, the talking about it, that's great. Second step is all the legalities to it. Once those are worked out, then hopefully, the recycle center will open back up. But I do think that it needs to expand further than just the recycle center. You know, now, since the recycle center's been closed, the organization I'm with, I mean, we've thrown away so much cardboard and plastics and other stuff, just in the general trash, that it's, it's not even funny. So, the, the program needs to expand just past the recycle center, you know. As some of the other candidates mentioned, you know, further into the house, further into businesses, make it easier for that organizations, businesses, or individuals to be able to recycle these things. Because, you know, if we have the location in Taos for the recycle centers there, but somebody in Cuesta, or somebody in Penasco, or somebody down in Pilares, why, you really have to drive all the way to Taos to recycle that stuff. So, we need to make it easier for our lying communities to be able to recycle as well. So, we need to work on that and figure out a method so that the outside communities can participate in the recycling as well, not just on the center of Taos. Thanks.
Alright, thank you all. So, the next question's about the county jail. And running a county jail anywhere is a really hard job. You're, you're dealing with people in all kinds of different levels of crisis, all kinds of different problems. So, it's not unusual for jail to have problems like ours has had. We've had inmate suicides, overdoses, and even alleged drug dealing on the part of jailers, accusations of excessive force by people who have been through that system. And that is one of the responsibilities of the County Commission. So, while that said, it's a very difficult thing to do to manage a jail and avoid problems from time to time. What would you do to make things better and ensure that, you know, our neighbors who are, you know, getting into criminal trouble, or being brought there to detox because there's nowhere else to go, are being treated humanely and fairly, and are in a safe environment? And Susan, you'd be the first for that question, two minutes.
Funding the jail is, it comes at an incredible cost. And in preparing a budget for, for the jail, it's, we did realize that when we built a jail here, that what it was gonna take to be able to, to fund it, to be able to equip the jail with a staff that is, is going to be required to run that jail. And in no way did it, did it compare to even just sending out our prisoners. And that was the goal, was to keep the prisoners here in Taos, instead of sending them to San Miguel or Santa Fe. At a cost, an incredible cost, from sixty-five dollars to ninety-five dollars a day. And, but again, what it was gonna cost, a greater cost was, was what we, we faced when we did open up our jail, and to the point where we had to close the, the juvenile side of the, of the jail. But as far as the, the administration of the jail, that is critical. To get the right person, to get the right director, to get the right, his, the assistance that he needs, the officers, the trained, that are willing to work in this kind of environment. And also, to, to see that, that the prisoners, that to, when they come in, I believe that there, what has been addressed is the lead program. And that lead program, it, there is a difference between those that need rehabilitation, those that need, are, are in need of a detox center versus being incarcerated. There can be re, there's rehabilitation for people. There's, we're open to, we're open to that, and we should be open to helping out so that we can have, people can be absorbed back. Maybe husbands, wives, our children, whatever is, whatever is affecting our community, we just need to be open, and, but again, the, the jail is just, should be just a holding center, not a permanent solution to our children and to the, our, the community that is now, again, has an issue with, with drugs and alcohol. So, again, I hope, we hope for the best, and hopefully, that they, we will come to a good, have good solutions. And as we study these issues, if.
Thanks, Susan. Chris, go ahead.
Well, when it comes to the jail, there's not one size fits all. I mean, there's, I mean, I think it comes down to having a good administrator and recognizing, I mean, there's mental health issues, there's detox issues, and then there's criminal issues. I think that's a very difficult subject, and I know it's very costly. And, you know, locking somebody up who has a mental health issue probably isn't the right answer, or, they have, need detox where they have a drug problem. So, it's not one size fits all, so I would look forward to, I think it comes down to educating and getting a staff that recognizes the issues, but it's a very costly one. And as we see in society, there's, that's a problem that I don't think we can sit and solve it at one meeting, two meetings. It's, we just try to educate ourselves and, and do the best that we possibly can for, for the community, for the residents of Taos County.
Alright, thank you. Ron?
Right now, our, our jail has, has an issue, we're understaffed and overworked and underpaid. And very little training for the new folks that are coming in, because there's no time to train them, because they're understaffed. That's a big issue, and how do you, you know, work this and, and try to treat your inmates humane and everybody else, regardless of their situation? So, we really need to work on getting staffed up fully. Right now, everybody's on mandatory overtime and overworked, that's difficult. I understand you can operate like that for a little while, but can't do it forever, you burn people out. And then you have the treatments that you do, so we, we need to work on that, get fully staffed, get the training up, work on the compensation for these people that work at the detention center. And I believe if we work on those, the situation at the detention center will get better.
Alright, thank you. Bob?
Yes, management of the detention center, I can remember when we were sending out our individuals that were in jail out to the different communities and paying a big price. And we just couldn't wait to get our own jail, and so now, we do have the detention center. And it is hard to, to run that operation. It's hard to run any operation, whether you have an elementary school or a water sanitation district office. It's about leadership, you have to have leadership, starting from the top. You have to train your workforce to deal with the situations, and just focus on, on, on that. In terms of the inmates, look for ways of rehabilitation and dealing with them. But yes, the detention center is a difficult one, and, and issues always come up. But it, it's, it's about leadership and training of, of the individuals to run the operation smoothly, or at least better.
Alright, thank you. So, the next question is, how do you avoid deadlocks? Something, obviously, that becomes an issue on any board. You know, how do you, you know, another way to phrase that is, how do you work through a difficult issue to someone that you don't see eye to eye on? So, Chris, why don't you start with that one, we'll just do one-minute answers for this.
Well, you know, Robert's rules is majority rule. So, I mean, there's always, the chairman will break the vote. And as a commission, even if you're in the minority, you better support what the majority goes, what's they vote for. So, I mean, you try to work, you try to work with, with your colleagues as best as you can, and it's, it's okay to, to agree to disagree. So, yeah, I mean, that's why it's an odd number, and you have a chairman and, or a chairwoman. So, they, they tie, they break the tie, so, you know. I, democracy at its best when you, that's how you avoid deadlocks.
Alright, Ron, go ahead.
Well, there's a term called disagree and commit. Obviously, you know, you have to do your homework prior to this, you know, everybody gets the information ahead of time. You, you should be doing your homework and asking questions prior to, to any situation or that's going on out there. And I think it needs to be discussed amongst people. But, you know, bottom line is, you, you have to talk it through, work with each other, and figure out what's gonna be the best for the entire county. And in some cases, it may not be your district, and in some cases, it may be. But you have to be able to justify what you're doing and why you're moving forward in that fashion, and why you're pushing so hard for that particular situation. And in some cases, again, you have to disagree, but you have to commit to move forward as an organization to get certain things done, even though you don't a hundred percent maybe agree with what, what's needed. But bottom line is, it's, it's the priority, so you need to get it done.
Thank you. Bob?
I, yes, it, it's about building consensus, getting people to, to work together as a team to get things done. I've been fortunate that, that every board that I served on from the school board, currently on the LIA board, is that we've always had good communications, everybody gets their say, we have good discussions, and then we vote, and the decision is made, we give clear direction to our staff, and that's real important. But it's about communications and just ensuring that people are able to talk openly, discuss the issues, and we don't always have a, a five to zero vote. We do have a divided votes on occasion, but what you work for is to get the, the group working together. And it's about how, how you treat people and how you get everybody to express their opinion and, and work together to get things done.
Alright, thank you. Susan, go ahead.
That's interesting, because I, I just had that discussion with someone earlier. And I just, in, in the position, the last position that I had as treasurer, I decided to, that it was necessary to, to develop an investment committee, an investment policy, and from there, a committee. And I found that, you know, when you bring people to the table, it's amazing, the, what you learn if you listen, and, and what you offer, what you can contribute to, to those around you. But you wait and you listen to what they have to offer. And we just grew, I believe that we just grew as a county, in our commitment to serve one another with respect. And even though, even though there's diversity, you can work through diversity. But, but in discussion, good dialogue during your homework, having that, those, those statistics, those answers from your staff, they're the ones that give you the information. And acknowledge them, I'd bring my, I'd bring my staff with me, my support staff. And sometimes, you know, you can bring someone else into the table so that they could see exactly how government works. And, but again, I'm amazed, when you, we, we had that last night in our, in our board meeting, and it was satisfying to be, to, to be a part of a board that communicates as such.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, so, next question, another one you all probably are used to hearing from voters, affordable housing. It's obviously another, it's up there with the recycling center, we hear about it all the time. Recently, the prior town administration took the position that they interpreted their role as really not to work on affordable housing, it's really falls to the county primarily. So, what do you think about that, and what ideas do you have specifically to help develop more affordable options for people to, to, to rent in Taos County? And we would start with Ron first on that one, one minute.
Affordable housing, you know, we're all focused, or the organizations are focused on rent, 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 which is good. But we're not doing anything for long-term housing, for forever homes for people. We need to work together with organizations, businesses, contractors, even with the town of Taos, right? To figure out what we can do to make affordable forever housing available to people, where they can purchase a home that they can live in forever, not just an apartment that they can rent, that, you know, you have to move out in two or three years, or depending on what your financial situation is, you know, it, it works, but, you know, something where people could call this their home. This is one way to start keeping people in Taos, keeping our locals here. If you don't give them that forever housing option, you know, they're gonna think twice about staying here, because they can move to bigger cities, real rental and other places, and maybe over there afford a home where they can't afford it here in Taos.
Alright, thank you. Bob?
Yeah, that, that's a difficult one for community, the problem is a high, high cost of housing, and lack of affordable housing. And so, what can government do? Well, we can maybe try to have a plan, to go back and look at the old housing study that was done some years ago, maybe upgrade it, then update it. We can look at our regs, the housing, the land use and subdivision regs. We need to work with the, the home builders, the people who are actually, are building houses. Are building houses in Taos as opposed to places like Las Vegas. People that we had here from Las Vegas, there are no houses being built in Las Vegas. But we do have them here, but they cost too much. So, we do have some possible solutions, the New Mexico Finance Authority appropriated twenty-five million dollars. It will be real curing for low interest rates for people that, that do qualify for those. So, we just have to continue working on it.
Alright, thank you, Susan.
Families are really important. I think if we have a good, a good, good home environment for, for our families, we're gonna succeed as a government. And I say that because in order to, we can talk about affordable housing. And we have, and even what is in place now, as we heard the presentations that we've sat in, at the county, and, and the, and the town, they plan to raise up the threshold of, to where it isn't just the low income, it is the working class, they can afford, that are gonna be able to afford some of these affordable housing. And, and to me, that is a good thing, but also, there needs to be some life skills taught. And because they're assuming a big responsibility. And because they're assuming a big responsibility when it comes to purchasing a home. And there's even though that these the taxes are going to be escrowed, and so is the insurance going to be escrowed, it's going to be built into the mortgage in the house. There's there's budgeting issues and how I think we just we should have a plan to be able to educate those people that are going to be applying for these these homes. But it would be wonderful to have these houses. I have this one rental property and and I was told that this is what you can charge for this two bedroom house. And but I saw that there was a need. One of my my the renter that I have now was living with my my friend and I had to lower the rent so she could live there.
Okay. Let me remind everyone, please respect the time limits so it can be fair. I appreciate your thorough answer, Susan. All right. So next question. Recreational marijuana, we've seen how this has played out. Sorry, Ron, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. I don't think we allowed Krista.
Okay, sorry, Chris. It's hard to keep track here. Go for it.
Right. I think on affordable housing, we need to look at the tax base, the permitting process, work with the developers. And I think we also need to planning and zoning. And I think we need to tap our our resources from the national labs on energy efficiency to make, you know, they can get a house, but they can't afford to heat it, or it's a choice between heating and buying groceries. And I think when we look at the tax base and the permitting process, planning and zoning, relooking at all that, we're getting the developers into here and bringing everybody to the table. Then along with the national laboratories, then we start with a plan to to make things more affordable for for the lower income or for the the working family or the single, single mom raising children or single parents trying to work and raise children. So I think that's where the process starts.
All right, thanks, Chris. All right. So next question, the recreational cannabis industry, we've seen how this has played out in some communities in Colorado where you have almost entire communities, you'll go through entire stretches of town where it's just cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. There's no limit here essentially on the licenses that can be approved. So how do we control this to avoid having the same kind of thing play out here? How do we have cannabis legalized here and have it available, but not have it take over? And the first person on that would be Bob.
Yes, so cannabis has become legal in New Mexico as of April first, so we have several months. And it is going to impact our communities. As you indicated, we have to monitor what's happening. There are some positive effects considering the retail sales that are going on. There will be apparently be some revenue coming in. So this revenue should be put to use to possibly support the substance abuse programs or other programs that benefit people in general. It could be negative such as driving under the influence, law enforcement is going to have to deal with that. They don't have the same technology that they do for alcohol drinking, all the influence of alcohol or roadside tests, but they need to get training for that. But there will be impact and we're just going to have to monitor it and and go with it because even entrepreneurship is another possible positive side benefit to what the people are starting businesses.
All right, thank you, Bob. Susan.
I don't know. I I'm in a I'm at a loss that how this could happen in New Mexico, but it did. And so that they brought it, there were there was no plan for it. We're gonna we're gonna have to do our own regulating. The police department, the the is also in a quandary as far as how they're going to control that, even the hiring. And how do you monitor that type of of situation with your employees? How do you measure their level of is that intoxication? I'm I'm not pretty to a lot of that information, but it's gonna it's gonna affect our the the working, the working situation in the jobs is going to affect the trap, I mean, the traffic. The I don't know, like I said, that is hard for me because I was not in in favor of the legalization of the cannabis in 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 our state.
Good. All right. Thank you, Susan. Chris.
I think cannabis, I think the state looked at it as a
revenue.
Economic, you know, and a revenue source. But I think there's yet to see the hangover on or how to deal with it, you know, if you're you're running a business, just because the state made it legal, do you have to allow your employees to to be able to smoke it? And then, you know, there's the, I think there's a mental there's a mental benefit to cannabis, but for recreational, I think we all got as Bob said, study it and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have the hangover effects and and monitor it, just like when alcohol, the liquor license came out, there was tons of bars and then regulations slowly slowly cut that down and and taxi did it now. So now you don't see as many liquor license as you do as you did before. So I think we all gonna have to learn with that one and see what the the aftermath is.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Ron.
You know, as everyone mentioned, there's revenues coming from this. We just need to ensure that the revenues are used properly for what they need to be used for. A lot of it is maybe training and, you know, infrastructure. And that's where it needs to be used. It is new for New Mexico. We do need to move forward and see what it is, but you know, society, we are a reactive society. So I pretty confident that, you know, once we get into this six months, a year, year and a half, you know, there's going to be some changes to this coming, you know, whatever those changes are, maybe throttle it down or or change the direction slightly, but I I don't think it's going anywhere. And I believe that, you know, every company, every organization out there still has the right to regulate what their employees, what the, you know, employees need to maintain for employment at those particular organizations. So that's not going to change. And that's just going to make people make choices as to whether they want to work there or not. So I think that's where we are in cannabis.
All right. Thank you all. So the next question is about Holy Cross Hospital. Everybody here knows that Holy Cross faced a serious financial crisis just a few years ago. And one of the solutions was increasing its public funding. There was a mill levy increase approved. There was a G R T allocation approved. So the question is, how would you work with Holy Cross's board of directors, with the CEO to ensure that the hospital doesn't face another crisis like that in the future? And we would start with Susan on that. We're gonna do two minutes on that question.
Okay. I I worked with the hospital as the finance director in in trying to see where their their monies were going to come in. And there was there were issues and with how the that the Holy Cross Hospital is structured because the building belongs to us, the property belongs to us. And but we faced the the services that are were were going to were going to be provided. That became such an issue because the accountability from the hospital was not there. There was no reporting that was available to us to be able to make any decisions that would be viable to that particular structure. And and yet they came to the county and they wanted they they wanted to have that levy enacted and they did. That was for infrastructure, but then they came back and they said, well, we also need we also need money for operations. So the county had been granted an enactment. And I believe it was one eighth. And the county gave it to them. But to me, what I would have done is I would have, there should have been some kind of restrictions, some kind of accountability, some kind of reporting, because that's what there was with the levy. That levy money came right through the county. But this one eighth went straight to the to the to the hospital. We need more accountability. We need someone of the from the board of the commission board to sit on that board and to be reporting or monthly reporting from a hospital to the county as to what what is being developed for the people of Taos County. Right now, it's every people are just being sent out and not being treated at Taos County, I mean, at the hospital.
All right, thank you, Susan. Bob. Or I'm sorry, Chris is next.
Well, I think, as we said earlier, consensus, I think we need to have the the hospital board be accountable or or we all sit down the hospital administrator and develop a plan because public safety or health is very important. And I think when you develop that plan, then you you lobby our our state senators and our delegation in Washington. And we try to find money because raising taxes doesn't always solve the problem or throwing money, it doesn't solve the problem all the time. So you have to develop a plan to, as Susan said, be accountable. Be accountable so that we're serving the residents of Taos County. I mean, you you go to Taos and they'll fly them out to Santa Fe and incur more costs or to Albuquerque and and you know, I mean, we could be a regional area for northern, northern New Mexico, but they just fly them out and the elderly, the elderly have to go all the way to Albuquerque because they can't get services here. So I think it comes down to collaboration, sitting down, being holding each other accountable. And but, you know, just raising taxes ain't going to solve the problem of of keeping our hospital open or or better service. So I think we all need to sit down and develop a a really economic plan and and services for the area. I know here in Pinasco, some people say, oh, I'll go to Espanola instead of instead of Taos. And I mean, people have mixed feelings, but I think collaboration and sitting down and developing a good, good plan for the hospital is where it's at.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Ron, go ahead.
Well, right now, what we have is a critical care facility, which means you come here, they stabilize you and they fly you out. Which has been mentioned, then all of a sudden you incur more cost, not only the flight, but depending where they fly you out to, now the family members have to rent a room or whatever else. So, you know, and the other thing is we don't have a lot of local nurses. We're paying travel nurses to come in. I don't think we have any local nurses working here anymore. There are local nurses are traveling to Espanola and Santa Fe. Our the current CEO has, you know, said he's retiring, so there's going to be somebody else coming in. And the first thing we need to look at is we need to look at what what the what's the current arrangement with this organization that the county has with them. We need to look at that thoroughly. Maybe with an attorney to see what the situation is. I would like the county commission to be part of the hiring for a new CEO if we're going to go there. And if it's going to continue with the same organization, I agree. I said, one of our county commissioners needs to sit on that hospital board for some oversight because right now, other than only in the building and the property, the county is not involved whatsoever with the operation of the hospital. And we're the ones accountable, the constituents out there. You know, we're fortunate here in the Pinasco area. People say, well, it's close to Espanola. We'll just go over there and we don't have to worry about being flown out. But people on the northern part of the county, you know, they don't have a choice. They have to come to Taos first. Or if you call an ambulance, the ambulance takes you directly to Taos. So we really need to figure out what needs to happen with this and and move forward. But, you know, I'm not sure that what the best solution is right now, but we really need to dissect what we have, figure out what's going on and move forward with either a new plan or revamp the current situation and and get more involved with that as a county.
Great. Bob, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the question, John. A very important question for the community. The next county commission is going to have to deal with the issue of hostile, the hostile is owned by the county and now it has additional public funding. So we do have to have accountability. Initially, when it was set up, the county essentially farmed out the management to outside contractors. That's what it's being run now. But again, it has a local board that is not elected, so we have no accountability. So yeah, we probably will have to have at least one board member on that board and maybe two. And then when we get management in place and a hospital being managed as it should be, then we can look at other sources of revenue. One possibility is to get the grocery receipts tax that what the legislators put in place to build the hospital and the hospital was paid off in ten years. Then that money was diverted to education and helped our public school districts, U N M Taos. But now it's probably time for the legislators to redirect it back to the hospital, but we have.
Right, thank you. So we're past six thirty here, so we're going to just go to closing statements. We'll go with two minutes. We started with Chris, so we'll start with Ron this time and then go from there. All right, start whenever you're ready, Ron.
Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. Really appreciate your support and and vote. Early voting has started at the county complex, eight to five, Monday through Saturday. Please go out and vote. We need every vote, everybody to vote. Your vote counts. For us county commissioners, this election is decided on June seventh. There's no opposition for the November, for the general election. So it is very important that you go out and vote. We appreciate your support. We appreciate the questions. We appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you very much for allowing us this time to discuss the issues in our county.
Yes, I want to thank you, John, and the Taos News for sponsoring this Zoom forum and for keeping the voters informed. I want to make it crystal clear that I am the progressive Democratic candidate in the District One race. I fully support the Taos County Democratic platform. I have always supported traditional democratic programs, initiatives and values. If you believe that we that if you believe that local government should act collaboratively, that we should take advantage of the opportunity to build more infrastructure and that we need a commissioner that will be effective in addressing the issues and serving the community, then I am your candidate. I am F R Bob Romero. I appreciate your vote and support. Your early voting started this week. Your voice is your vote. Suboto es subos. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. Susan, go ahead.
An effective county commissioner can leave a legacy of good works and make an impact on people's lives. The county commissioner is the closest level of government to the people. Although challenging, working directly with constituents builds a solid foundation that creates future leaders. A county commissioner with a clear understanding of their role improves collaboration across all levels of local government, increasing the effectiveness of county to meet the needs of its residents. And I'm so grateful. And as challenging as these races are, I just find it such a privilege and such an honor to be able to serve my community. As as I served Taos County, I would, I serve my community and I just appreciate Taos News for their their generosity and their commitment to bring this forum to the people of Taos County. And 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 again, I I'd like to say that in walking And 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 again, I I'd like to say that in walking the land, in walking this district, I have met the most wonderful people and the most gracious people. And I thank them, I want to thank them for hosting me as I, as I talked to them and as I, as I asked them for the vote, you know, to support my my campaign and but also to 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 share the fact that of who's running for office. It just, it's not inclusive of just District One. It's also the the whole election process. Because again, I say that we we're servant leaders and we're we're being called to leadership in our communities and in our local governments.
All right, thank you, Susan. Chris.
Yeah, thank you, John, and the Taos News for putting on this forum. I would thank everybody for for tuning in. And it's very important to get out and vote. I believe that I had asked you for your vote because I'm here to serve you, the constituents. It's, it's your county and I'm here willing to work for you and not the other way around where the commission tells you. You tell the commission how you want your county to be and that, and we set it in action. So I humbly ask for your vote and thank you guys all for joining us this evening.
All right, and I extend my thanks to everybody who tuned in to watch, the candidates. I know you all are very busy. Thank you for answering the questions. We wish you all the best of luck. The election is June seventh. Please get out and vote and hope you all have a great night.
Good night.
Good as well. Good night.